Candice Spire, Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a nine-person volunteer citizen board, appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Our procedure this evening is as follows. First, we will hear from the Planning and Development Services Unit, represented tonight by Mr. John Barrett. Then the petitioner or his or her representative will make his or her presentation. Petitioners will have five minutes in which to make their presentation. The board members may ask questions of either the city or the petitioner. We will acknowledge any written comments received by the board. We will allow any appearing party to express their support or objections. The board will discuss the appeal and formulate a resolution to approve the appeal. Five affirmative votes of the board will be required for an appeal to be granted. Finally, any qualified party who is aggrieved by a decision of the board can appeal that decision to the Washtenaw County Circuit Court on a timely basis. Stu, roll call. I am here. Mike Daniel?
Here.
Dave DeVardy?
Here.
Mike Dobmeyer?
Here.
Nicole Eisenman?
Here.
Todd Grant?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Julie Weatherby?
Kirk Westfall?
Here.
We have a quorum. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any comments on the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support from Westfall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the August 28th meeting. Any comments or questions on those minutes? Or a motion to approve the minutes? Mike, did you say a motion?
Motion.
Support from Kirk, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's move on to our first appeals. ZBA 17-026-710, Taylor Street. John?
My name is John Barrett, zoning coordinator for the City of Ann Arbor. The first case this evening is ZBA case 17-026. The address is 710 Taylor Street. Elizabeth Vandermark, property owner, requests two variances from Chapter 55 zoning, Section 5:28. A variance of three feet in the front yard and two feet in the rear yard is being requested. The front yard setback requirement is 19 feet six inches and the rear yard setback requirement is 30 feet. The owners are seeking to construct a 915 square foot addition to the rear of their existing 1,100 square foot home. The property is zoned R1C, single-family residential, and is located on a corner lot that fronts Taylor Street and Pear Street directly across from Northside Park. The property received a variance on June 28, 2006, to reduce the Pear Street setback from 25 feet to down to 19 feet six inches. Applicants did not receive a rear yard variance at that hearing and are requesting a two-foot variance in the rear yard tonight for that proposed addition. The new addition will be approximately 16 feet by 24 feet and will contain two stories with a total height of 27 feet six inches. The addition will contain a bathroom, three bedrooms, and a new entry area for the house. It will be sited at the rear of the property and will encroach towards the Pear Street road frontage. If you'll turn your attention to the monitors. The first slide is the location map. You see the highlighted parcel right here, and it's at the corner of Taylor Street and Pear Street, and there's the Northside Park. Next slide shows the aerial of the area, of the neighborhood, the properties highlighted for you. And the next slide is a close-up of the property, and the proposed addition is going to be in the back yard in this area, and it'll be closer towards the Pear Street side, and that's where the variance of the three feet being requested from 19 feet six inches currently down to 16 feet six inches along Pear Street, and then 30 feet down to 28 in the rear. This is the survey that was submitted with the application. You may need to file in your packets. It's a little light, some of these slides. This is the proposed addition, the site plan, showing the floor plan. There's a bathroom right here and a bedroom. This is the first floor plan. There'll be, I believe there's going to be a half bath right here, and then a full bath right there, and then the bedroom. And that's the first floor, the second floor with two bedrooms up top. This is the east elevation that's being proposed, and this is the addition right here, the two-story addition. Next slide shows the west elevation, and you see the addition right back here. This is, out here is Taylor Street, and that's the front of the house. Next slide is the south elevation, looking directly at the proposed addition. And the next slide is looking at it from Taylor Street directly onto the front of the house, and that is the addition and how the front elevation will be looking for the proposed project. Next slides are photos of the site when I was out there doing my inspection. That's the front of the house from Taylor Street. That's just to the side, a different angle of the front, and you see the detached garage in the back. This is the area where the addition will be in the rear yard. And this is the side yard along Pear Street. Just another photo of the side yard along Pear, directly from Pear, looking directly at the house. The addition will be back in this area. And that's looking where, right where the addition will be, in the rear yard along Pear. Rear of the house, and just another photo of the home from the street, Taylor Street, with my back facing Northside Park. I will take any questions at this time.
Thanks, John. Todd?
Yes, John, I noticed in the background you mentioned that in 2006, the applicants, quote, "did not receive a rear yard variance at that year." Did they ask for one or denied, or did they simply not ask?
They didn't ask for one at that time. The, I failed to mention, you do have the minutes from that meeting as a handout tonight. You should have it in your packet there. Any other questions?
Okay.
Sir? Was there a floor plan of the second floor addition?
Yes.
And the way it ties into the old building?
That's the second floor right there. I believe this is going to be the connection with the house right here, and then there will be two bedrooms up top.
So is there a doorway from the new section into the old section? I guess I'll ask the petitioner.
I think there will be. I think it's going to be right in this area.
There's a doorway out. It looks like there's a balcony or something there.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if the petitioner's here, if you could please step forward, sign in, state your name for the record.
Elizabeth Vandermark, property owner. Thank you for your time today. The proposed addition will provide us with a more modern and water-efficient bathroom, a half-bath, three bedrooms, and a new entry area for our house. This will allow the vacated spaces in the original house to be opened up and used more fully in living and dining rooms and kitchen space. The additional square footage will provide our family of five space to live more comfortably in our house and stay in our neighborhood, which we're really committed to. It actually gives us a chance to reorganize what was a 1947 Cape Cod, very chunked up and broken up, house into something that's a little bit more modern. We've lived in the neighborhood since 97. We're very committed to the Northside neighborhood, but our family has grown up. I have three kids, and so we're really kind of bursting at the seams of our 1,100 square foot house. The addition of the, a little bit over 900 square feet, will allow us to be more in keeping with the other houses in the neighborhood at 2,000 square feet and also make it a little bit more in keeping with the rest of the market. When the house was constructed, it was really a very basic economical box without any front porch to make transition to the street. In 2006, as staff has indicated, we received a variance to add a porch on the front of the house. You see the results of that on the screen. And then we, at the time, we also thought we wanted to put an addition on, but we kind of ran out of money. And so what we did was we put that addition on hold. When we redesigned the addition, we wanted to make it smaller, and we wanted to turn it a little bit, which is why the variance is needed on both the side or the front to pair, as well as the rear. We never sought a rear variance originally, and we just, with the redesign, we needed it for this. In both cases, it's a very small encroachment, but unfortunately it does encroach, so that's why we're seeking a variance. The house was designed to be a starter house, and it functions very nicely, but we think the addition as proposed will make it more modern and ultimately more marketable when we do decide down the road to sell. Thank you for your time. Or anything else?
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Dave?
Yeah, I was, I'm really familiar with this neighborhood. Both my children were in preschool right there on Pear Street.
Oh, great.
With Gladys, who I, yes, she has passed away.
She has.
Yep. Also, I used to play softball all the time in that, on that softball diamond right across the street. The, there are, most of the houses seem to be about the size of your house, and I did walk up and down Pear Street today, and there are some houses that are larger. So I think that in terms of the character of the neighborhood, to say that most of the houses are larger is somewhat of a stretch. But I'm for you adding an addition. My question is, though, as I'm looking at the layout with the, with the previous setback variance you were granted to 19 feet and six inches, and I'm looking at that new design, if it was just rotated, you would fit right within your, the setback that was granted previously. And I'm just wondering why, all of a sudden, do you want to rotate it as an offset from the rest of the house, and in so doing, it's, that's what's causing you to need both the variance in the back and an additional variance on that side, on the Pear Street side?
There's two reasons. One of which is that the original design encroached on the garage, and in getting closer than four feet to the garage, we were going to need additional fire rating on the back of the house because of code requirements. So we wanted to try to get a little more space between the garage and the addition. And in looking at that, the other thing that we were trying to look at was to reorganize the way you enter the house. Currently, actually, if you can go to a picture in the front of the house, our front door is right at the front corner of the house, and we enter into the kitchen. We're not looking to relocate the kitchen, but we would like to create a mud room in between to allow people to come in and then go either to the bedrooms to the right or to the living space to the left. of breathing space between the addition and the main house. The other thing is, is that when you pull it off, then we were going to be encroaching even more into the backyard, so by tilting it, it minimizes the perception of that facade on the Taylor Street side because it's at an angle instead of being broad-faced, and we thought that that would provide, make it, cut it down a little bit in terms of the overall massing of the addition.
So I've done some construction before. The difference in fire rating is just thicker walls and better, more dry, or thicker drywall.
But we wanted to try to get some more space between the two. You are correct, though. Absolutely.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I just want to confirm my understanding of the fire rating portion of the discussion. In the previous design, or whatever you had in mind in the past, would the addition have been touching the garage or connecting with the garage?
It was just close enough. When you get too close to another structure, and forgive me, I don't have all the details, but when you get close enough, you have to have more of a protection so that you don't have a fire jumping from one structure to another structure. And I think that's not the primary reason we pulled it off. We really pulled it off to have a little more space, a little more breathing room, both in constructability as well as ultimate circulation between the garage and the addition.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Go ahead, Dave.
Did you work with an architect, or is this your design?
I'm an architect.
You're an architect, okay.
Although I don't actually work as an architect from my professional work, so for the last 20 years, I've done other things.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience here to speak on this petition? I will note that we received letters of support from Catherine Kuhn at 717 Johnny Woods Drive and from David Mishner and Will Strickland at 1622 Pontiac Trail. All right, seeing no one else to speak on this, we're in discussion. Todd?
Yes, Dave, you took, I was going to ask a very similar question. I'm sort of on the fence about this because obviously they put a lot of work and thinking go into the variances they were granted in 2006. So this is simply a new tweaking. They're asking for a second variance essentially because of the alter to the design. So this is something they've created on their own, so that's a negative. On the other hand, they're only asking for two feet. In a mind-bending, that's sort of de minimis, and so I'm looking at both sides of this. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote, but that's my thinking at this point. Do any of you have an opinion on those to help me out?
Dave?
I'm somewhat torn as well. It is a minimal request, but I've worked with architects, and I've actually, some years ago, before I got on the zoning board, I was in your seat, and my architect told me that when he brought something before the planning, the zoning board, when Martin Overheiser was the planning director many, many years ago, Martin Overheiser pulled him aside and said, "Look, you're the architect. It's your job to meet the zoning code as much as you can, and if it's impossible, go for a variance." What I'm looking at is a configuration that works if it's rotated. It fits within, you've been granted a variance on the side setback already, and it looks like the variances that were previously granted will accommodate the kind of structure you want, and I don't know what, for what design considerations or whatever, you're rotating it slightly, and I don't think you need to. I think you can meet your needs, and I have not been convinced that you need this variance to meet the needs. The former, the first, the earlier variance, and I agree, corner lots are problematic, and I would have voted for that earlier variance. I can't vote for this variance just because the case has not been made that you need the extra space to do what you want to do, except for some design, I mean, like to tilt it around.
Mike?
So I'm looking at kind of the overhead view of the property, and I understand the petitioner's reason, I think, for rotating, or for angling the addition kind of more towards the, I guess, the center of the back lot, which will infringe on both the side and the rear variances in a way that the other addition does not. I think generally speaking, from like a center-of-gravity perspective, it provides more privacy to the neighbors next door, and it's still reasonably away from Pear Street. Where I'm struggling, though, is that it feels like this doesn't meet condition B that we are obligated to take into account, that the practical difficulties which were a result from a failure to grant the variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience and ability to attain a higher financial return or both. I feel like there are solutions here that provide what the petitioner's looking for without having to request additional variances. And so I would agree with some of what's been said already, that that's on my mind in this case.
Any other discussion?
Kirk?
Thank you. Just a clarification from staff, if I could. Would you characterize that there's an ample opportunity for a substantial addition without coming before the ZBA?
I do think they have the ability to build an addition within the established building envelope, yes. On the other hand, just to be honest, I don't know if it's going to have a negative impact on the surrounding properties.
That was going to be my next question, so I know sometimes...
Due to it being on a corner lot, and so it's not going to infringe on anyone's sightlines or the neighbors, and due to the heavy vegetation on the site, it's, I feel like the impacts are going to be minimal. But back to your original question, can the applicant build the addition within the required envelope? Yes.
And if they were to pursue an alternate design, is it possible that there, an alternate design could infringe more on the next-door neighbor? Because they're not asking for variations in the side setback, so...
Right, but I think if they were to adjust their plans and go towards the, towards the garage side, if you look at this, what's up on the screen now, the detached garage is restricting their ability to move towards the, that's the west or the east side of the house, east side of the property.
And the garage is...
Garage is right here on this...
Right. Okay, so it's kind of upside down? Okay. And the garage is just an existing...
Existing one-car detached garage.
Okay, and that's infringing on the rear setback. Is that called the rear?
Well, that's, that's in compliance. The detached garage can be within three feet of the side or rear property lines. But in order to, if you were, if I understand your question, if they were to build this way and away from Pear Street, the addition would be infringing upon this garage back here. So I think the only way to build an addition is towards the Pear Street side or the rear. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, say it were rerotated...
Addition in the main house. The other thing is, is that when you pull it off, then we were going to be encroaching even more into the backyard. So by tilting it, it minimizes the perception of that facade on the Taylor Street side because it's at an angle instead of being broad-faced. And we thought that that would provide, make it, cut it down a little bit in terms of the overall massing of the addition.
So I've done some construction before. The difference in fire rating is just thicker walls and better, more dry, or thicker drywall.
But we wanted to try to get some more space between the two. You are correct, though.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I just want to confirm my understanding of the fire rating portion of the discussion. In the previous design, or whatever you had in mind in the past, would the addition have been touching the garage or connecting with the garage?
It was just close enough. When you get too close to another structure, and forgive me, I don't have all the details, but when you get close enough, you have to have more of a protection so that you don't have a fire jumping from one structure to another structure. And I think that's not the primary reason we pulled it off. We really pulled it off to have a little more space, a little more breathing room, both in constructability as well as ultimate circulation between the garage and the addition.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Go ahead, Dave.
Did you work with an architect, or is this your design?
I'm an architect.
You're an architect, okay.
Although I don't actually work as an architect from my professional work. So for the last 20 years, I've done other things.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience here to speak on this petition?
I will note that we received letters of support from Catherine Kuhn at 717 Johnny Woods Drive, and from David Mishner and Will Strickland at 1622 Pontiac Trail.
All right, seeing no one else to speak on this, we're in discussion. Todd?
Yes, Dave, you took, I was going to ask a very similar question. I'm sort of on the fence about this because obviously they put a lot of work and thinking into it, but it appears from the presentation we've had that the plan they had in 2006 would go into the variances they were granted in 2006. So this is simply a new tweaking. They're asking for a second variance essentially because of the alter to the design. So this is something they've created on their own, so that's a negative. On the other hand, they're only asking for two feet. In my mind, that's sort of de minimis. And so I'm looking at both sides of this. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote, but that's my thinking at this point. Do any of you have an opinion on those to help me out?
Dave?
I'm somewhat torn as well. It is a minimal request, but I've worked with architects, and I've actually, some years ago, before I got on the zoning board, I was in your seat. And my architect told me that when he brought something before the planning, the zoning board, when Martin Oberheiser was the planning director many, many years ago, Martin Oberheiser pulled him aside and said, "Look, you're the architect. It's your job to meet the zoning code as much as you can, and if it's impossible, go for a variance." What I'm looking at is a configuration that works if it's rotated. It fits within, you've been granted a variance on the side setback already, and it looks like the variances that were previously granted will accommodate the kind of structure you want. And I don't know what, for what design considerations or whatever, you're rotating it slightly. And I don't think you need to. I think you can meet your needs. And I have not been convinced that you need this variance to meet the needs. The former, the first, the earlier variance, and I agree, corner lots are problematic, and I would have voted for that earlier variance. I can't vote for this variance just because the case has not been made that you need the extra space to do what you want to do, except for some design, I mean, like to tilt it around.
Mike?
So I'm looking at kind of the overhead view of the property, and I understand the petitioner's reason, I think, for rot, or for angling the addition kind of more towards the, I guess, the center of the back lot, which will infringe on both the side and the rear variances in a way that the other addition does not. I think generally speaking from like a center of gravity perspective, it provides more privacy to the neighbors next door, and it's still reasonably away from Pear Street. Where I'm struggling, though, is that it feels like this doesn't meet condition B that we are obligated to take into account, that the practical difficulties which were a result from a failure to grant the variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience inability to attain a higher financial return or both. I feel like there are solutions here that provide what the petitioner is looking for without having to request additional variances. And so I would agree with some of what's been said already, that that's on my mind in this case.
Any other discussion?
Thank you. Just a clarification from staff, if I could. Would you characterize that there's an ample opportunity for a substantial addition without coming before the ZBA?
I do think they have the ability to build an addition within the established building envelope, yes. On the other hand, just to be honest, I don't know if it's going to have a negative impact on the surrounding properties.
That was going to be my next question, so I know sometimes...
Due to it being on a corner lot, and so it's not going to infringe on anyone's sightlines or the neighbors, and due to the heavy vegetation on the site, it's, I feel like the impacts are going to be minimal. But back to your original question, can the applicant build the addition within the required envelope? Yes.
And if they were to pursue an alternate design, is it possible that there, an alternate design could infringe more on the next-door neighbor? Because they're not asking for variations in the side setback, so...
Right, but I think if they were to adjust their plans and go towards the, towards the garage side, if you look at this, what's up on the screen now, the detached garage is restricting their ability to move towards the, that's the west, or the east side of the house, east side of the property.
And the garage is...
Garage is right here on this...
Right.
That's the west.
Okay, so it's kind of upside down? Okay. And the garage is just an existing...
Existing one-car detached garage.
Okay, and that's infringing on the rear setback. Is that called the rear?
Well, that's, that's in compliance. The detached garage can be within three feet of the side or rear property lines. But in order to, if you were, if I understand your question, if they were to build this way and away from Pear Street, the addition would be infringing upon this garage back here. So I think the only way to build an addition is towards the Pear Street side or the rear. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, say it were rerotated, so it's plumb with the main structure. They could, you know, on this diagram, it could be extended to the right quite a bit more, correct, up to that setback line?
Along the existing plane of the house?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, the driveway, okay.
But it, it will affect the circulation pattern between the two structures.
Understood. Yeah, I just, you know, I...
You're looking for alternate, alternate solutions.
Well, you, well, no, I'm just wondering if it's a case of, be careful what you wish for, because, I mean, if this doesn't fit, I'm just wondering if, you know, something that's by right would be a worse outcome for the neighbors in some sense, or aesthetically. So I'm still, I'm still thinking, thanks.
Dave?
John, if, if in rotating, I, they've raised the concern of wanting the space to move between the garage and the new addition. So if that rotates, it gets off of close to the garage. I'm wondering if, if it attaches to the garage, does that change the nature of the setback requirements? Because then the garage is attached and not detached, or if it's, or would it have to have, would it have to have a communication to the garage?
They could attach it to the garage, as long as the garage remains unhabitable and unheated, unconditioned space.
Okay, so they could rotate it right up to that space?
Yes. I'm not sure that's the desirable outcome for the petitioner, though.
Right, I understand.
Kirk?
Oh, go ahead. I'm really struggling with this as well. I do think that the three foot set that's being requested towards Pear Street is pretty minimal, and it's not the entire length of the proposed addition. So it's a small triangle going into Pear Street, towards Pear Street. I don't really have such an issue with the two feet to the rear, but I do feel strongly that an architect should try to design within the limits that are set. So I'm kind of on the fence still about where to go.
And just for further clarification, if you look at the site plan in your packet or up here on the screen, this figure right here says three. It's difficult to read on the screen, but this back corner is the portion that would encroach into that Pear Street side. And then this figure right here says two feet, and it's this corner right here that would encroach on the two-foot setback. So it's not going to be the entire addition, it's just going to be corners.
And I think that that's where I'm really struggling on this one, because it feels to me like a couple dimensional changes could allow this in practice to be accommodated within the existing footprint without needing a variance. But the other side of this for me is, it's also fairly minimal, and there's something to be said about maintaining some circulation between the garage and the new addition for access into the backyard, and that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Dave?
My issue with this is, you came in for a setback variance some years ago, and it was granted, and I would have voted for it. So now you're asking for another three feet, and it's like an inch here, an inch there, an inch there, and eventually you've got a mile. So it's, it's just, I, I feel like what you asked for before you were granted, and it gives you the space to work. If we do grant a variance, it runs with the land. So you've got a variance that's, an addition could be put sometime down the road that fills up that entire space along the side of the house up to the new setback line that we've been granted. So given that, even though your design looks like it's a minimal thing, and, you know, I guess we have the leeway to grant a variance contingent on it only being used for that design, but the variance is going to run with the land. And in terms of what you want to do, I think the previous variance grants you the capability to do what you want to do.
Kirk?
Couple more clarifications from staff, please. One is, just, just to reaffirm what my fellow colleague said about granting a variance, and so that would apply to any, I mean, if, if this variance were granted, the addition were not put on, the property changes hands in 20 years, could that mean a tear down at worst, and with an envelope that's expanded?
How did I know you were going to ask this question? That's correct. If the, you can say tonight on the motion per submitted plans, like we always do, but it's also going to establish with the land, it's going to be 16 feet, six inches. So you're going to, someone could eventually build a structure all along that tire 16-inch, 16-foot, six-inch plane, if that makes sense.
So saying per submitted plans wouldn't lock in...
For this project, I think it would, but since it runs with the land, 20 years down the road, when we're all not sitting here, it's still going to be established as a 16-foot, six-inch front setback.
And one other logistical question on the mortgage survey, there's an appearance that there's two lots, is that the case?
No, it's one lot.
And is that one dashed line?
That's the rear setback line, I believe.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I, so I guess in, I struggle because of the minimal variance requested, and because of the enhanced value of the house and the ability to stay in the neighborhood, and for all the good reasons, there's letters of support. It appears the neighbors are unperturbed, and although, and all those things add up on the positive side in my book. I don't see it, you know, establishing some kind of precedent for, or expectation on the behalf of other neighbors, you know, like we've had in some areas where, you know, it could easily be seen that it would precipitate a bunch of other requests. So, yeah, I'd like to hear from other folks before deciding.
So Nicole, can I address someone specifically on the board, or no?
Yeah.
Nicole, you're an architect, right?
Yes.
What is the typical dimension that you would provide? You would specify for like a minimum corridor or access? I'm, I'm looking at the five, four and five-eighths dimension between the corner of the garage and the current, the designed addition, and I'm wondering if we, if there's, if a, if three foot is typical for a space to get in between the garage or something like that into the backyard?
Well, a few caveats, I guess.
Okay.
And I don't want to be a designer on this project.
That's exactly what I'm doing, I'm sorry.
But, and I actually haven't done very much residential architecture, so I don't know. Although I actually am, am having this sort of struggle with my own home, thinking about that relationship between garage and house. And, you know, I do feel like what she's suggesting feels comfortable as a pass-through.
Okay.
But, yeah, I guess it would be the designer's option.
Yeah. I guess that, how that relates to this decision for me is, it feels like there are design solutions. I agree with what's been said specifically about the three-foot setback rather than the rear yard setback, and it feels like there's a solution there that can avoid having to request that variance, that still practically gives an addition that will meet the needs of the owner. So I'm leaning towards voting no on this one for, for those grounds.
Kirk?
Yeah, I suppose I'm leaning in a similar direction, just because, you know, we're obligated to meet all these criteria, and, and there's certainly, you know, reasonable but not, not optimal use of land right now for this, for these occupants, but this has been pointed out as, you know, we're, we're giving a variance for, in perpetuity here. So it seems like there is a convenience and an optimization factor rather than hardship or necessity in this case. So I don't like voting that way when somebody's trying to improve their property, but I suppose if, these are the kinds of changes that we want to allow, we need to revisit the setbacks for, for the neighborhood or solve it some other way, but I guess that's the way I'm leaning.
Any further discussion or a motion?
Motion?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll move petition ZBA 17-026, 710 Taylor Street, a variance based on the following findings of fact, and in accordance with the established standards for approval. The zoning board of appeal hereby grants the following variances from Chapter 55, Section 528, five colon 28, area height and placement regulations to allow a 915 square-foot addition to be constructed at the rear of the home. A variance of three feet in the front yard, the Pear Street side, and a two-foot variance in the rear yard. The new setback on Pear Street will be 16 foot, six inches, and the rear yard setback will be 28 feet. The addition is to be constructed per the submitted plans. A, the alleged practical difficulties are peculiar to the property and result from conditions which do not exist generally throughout the city. B, that the practical difficulties which will result from a failure to grant the variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience inability to attain a higher financial return or both. C, the variance, if granted, will not significantly affect surrounding properties. D, the circumstances of the variance request are not self-imposed. E, the variance request is the minimum necessary to achieve reasonable use of the land or structure.
A motion, do I have support? Nicole? We'll do a roll call vote. Dave?
No.
Mike Dobmeyer?
No.
Nicole?
No.
Todd?
I like how Mike Dobmeyer phrased it, there is a solution without needing our variance here, and I also vote no.
Kirk?
No.
I vote no. Mike Daniel?
No.
Motion is denied. Moving on to ZBA 17-027, 1420 East Stadium Boulevard. John?
The next petition this evening is ZBA case 17-027. The address is 1420 East Stadium Boulevard. Quattro Construction is requesting a variance from Chapter 61, signs and outdoor advertising of 35.21 feet from the rear required setback of 38 feet for a detached identification sign along East Stadium Boulevard. A variance of 31.75 along the Packard Street side is also required for the sign. The site is located on the southwest corner of East Stadium Boulevard and Packard Road. Go ahead and skip down to the second paragraph. The site currently has an existing identification sign with a digital sign face. The petitioner plans on refacing the digital cabinet and replacing it with an LED light-emitting diode cabinet and a new Circle K cabinet and logo. The structural components of the sign will remain the same, only the cabinets will, will be replaced. The city's traffic engineer has reviewed and supports the variance request as proposed. The petitioner was seeking to erect a monument-style sign in the same location as the existing sign. However, after an onsite inspection with the traffic engineer, it was determined that the current pine line sign, style sign was more appropriate for the traffic conditions. A monument-style sign would block vision for motorists at the intersection, and pedestrians would be hidden behind this style of sign. Can you turn your attention to the monitor? The first slide shows the location map. It's right at the corner of Stadium and Packard. I believe everyone's familiar with the site. The next photo is the aerial of the property. And that's a zoomed-in photo of the property. You see the existing building, and the sign is located right out here at the corner. This is part of the application, the existing sign as you see it, and the proposed, it's just going to be a complete reface. The structural components will remain the same, just new cabinets inside. Once a non-conforming sign undergoes, changes with the cabinets, all refacing, that does require it come, the sign comes into compliance with today's code. And that's why they're here tonight for the variance request, because they can't meet today's code, the requirement of 38 feet from the front setback. It has to be two feet for every one foot in sign height, and the sign is currently 19 feet in height, thereby requiring 38 feet from the front property line. It's a little difficult to read the site plan of the survey, but that's the canopies of the proposed site letter. The new construction is completed, and then the existing sign will be right there. Just a rendering of what the finished product of the building will look like. We've had this case before, it was a couple months ago. These are the photos of the existing and current conditions. See it from both sides, Packard and Stadium, showing the distance to the property lines from the sign, right, the pole's right in here. Looking down Stadium, looking down Packard, looking at the sign from the interior of the site, and this existing building. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'll take questions at this time.
Thanks, John. Any questions for staff? Dave?
If you could slide, I think, forward one or two signs. Okay, no, go back, right there. So the little white sign that's on the pole, which we can't see what it says, is that sign legal?
No, that needs to come down.
Mike?
John, just to clarify, they're basically just repurposing the existing sign, right? It's not going to be any higher, not going to be any wider.
Correct.
The bottom of what's blue is going to be the bottom, so what's, what's completely transparent stays the same area?
Not, yes, and that, we, the traffic engineer and I stood at the stop bar on Packard and looked this way, and if you, you can obviously see, you can see through...
Right, right. That's not coming down to peep vision anymore?
No, no, it's going to remain eight feet of clearance.
Got it, and...
And I believe this sign was originally erected in 1973, if I'm not mistaken, '73 or '74.
And the portion of the sign that's, that Circle K logo, the proposed sign has, that has Circle K, and it has signage for unleaded and signage for diesel, so that Circle K and the gold, is that coming down to where the bottom of the Circle K is now? Or is, is more space being taken up by electronic...
They're going to split that existing cabinet, that cabinet, new cabinet, be split in half.
Okay, got it.
Yep. They're still going to maintain the eight feet of clearance.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay. How tall is the current sign?
19 feet.
And the canopy is, I lost it here, 24?
That the, I'm not sure how tall the canopy is going to be behind, this might be a question for the applicant. I'm being told 17 to the top.
17, and, and, I'm sorry, the sign is now?
19 feet.
Okay. And, so this sign no longer meets current sign requirements?
Correct.
Could you review a little bit, I know you weren't...
Could you review a little bit, I know you weren't here the last time the sign requirements changed, but, you know, we've had sign variances requested before. Could you review a little bit about why those were changed and the rationale for that? Why sign variances, like, sign ordinances like ours get more restrictive?
I'm not sure what the original intention was, because it was way before my time, but I think it was to move away from these style of signs and get more monument-style signs, reduce the overall visual effects of signs.
And so this variance was spurred by traffic engineering?
Well, I went out with the traffic engineer because we had discussed with the applicant about doing a monument-style sign in that same location, and she suggested strongly against it due to the fact that it's going to hide traffic vehicles from Packard, from Packard looking at Washington Stadium, and because pedestrians could actually hide behind that sign. You wouldn't see them coming out from that sign onto the, into the crosswalk. So she said, "I suggest highly against the monument style and keeping this as it is due to the fact that you can see through it."
So it's a, right, I mean, if you're at the corner, you're visible, but if you're, say, traveling quickly on a bike or something, you would, I guess, disappear. I mean, because if you're in the cross, if you're on the corner of the street, you're not hidden by the sign at all, correct?
Not on the very corner, but if you're approaching that sign, you can be hidden behind it.
How tall would the sign have to be if it were in the current spot by today's regulations? Or how tall could the monument sign be?
Well, the monument sign would have had to receive a variance as well, but it wouldn't have been as large. But at the current location, they'd only have a one-foot sign where it's currently at.
Understood. Was there, and they're looking to preserve the infrastructure, like the poles, or are the poles being replaced, the whole thing being replaced?
No, the poles are not going to change. It's just going to be the cabinets within the, the structural components stay the same, just those cabinets are being replaced.
Was there any discussion of decreasing the height, not to the point where it would hide a pedestrian or cyclist, but trying to meet the spirit of the ordinance a little bit with some effort to shorten the whole thing, but yet still provide plenty of through view, vision?
That would be a better question for the applicant.
Great, thank you.
Dave?
I've got a question about, there's some total limit on the total signage on the building with most of these...
For the overall site, they're at 230 square feet.
And with all the things on the canopy and on their building, and this, are they still within that?
We are reviewing that with the applicant. It's an ongoing discussion right now. Their sign package has not been submitted yet. They submitted something previously, and we've reviewed it, and we inform them that there is, they're over their limit, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if the petitioner could please step forward, state your name for the record and sign in.
Good evening. My name's Rich Lawrence. I'm the director of real estate for Circle K. Also here's Todd Quatro, our contractor. Just like to make two quick points. My first point, just would like to reiterate, the refacing of the sign, not so much to me or maybe even the gentlemen and ladies on the board, but to the casual observer, I'm not sure there's going to be a noticeable difference. That's my first point. We just want to maintain the sign that we have with the purpose of that existing sign. Point number two, we've been working to come up with a design for our redevelopment of this property over three years, and we worked quite diligently with the city, the neighborhood, to come up with an acceptable site plan that addressed as best it could everyone's concerns, and we feel like we finally have been successful, and in fact, as I think you know, that site plan's been approved. However, the site has challenges, and given what's been approved, there is not the ability to bring that sign back off the property boundaries, okay, to meet code. And if with, I know that site plan was difficult to see, but if you do inspect it, there's really no place to bring that sign in closer to the canopy or off the property. With that, are there any questions I can answer?
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Kirk?
I, you know, having had the site plan here, and I know it's been quite a run at planning permission and with the neighborhood, so I appreciate your diligence with this. Do you have any properties where the signs have alternative placement or have seen examples where the signs are not on a freestanding sign but connected to the canopy or otherwise placed in the property?
I've seen that very few times, not within our portfolio, but I've seen signs on the canopy pricing, so to answer your question, I have seen it. There are alternatives. We've put signs at both ends of the property where the curb cuts are, or even smaller signs. We've done that. That's not unusual. We have done monument signs. We're not even opposed to that, to have a reasonably sized monument sign. But in regard to this property and where we think the sign has to be, given the site plan limitations, we feel this is the best solution. And it's, I mean, it's very typical as well, in terms of what we would install in other places, if that, if that's your part of your question.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Dave?
I see in the materials here, a sign that says unleaded 198.9. If we approve this, can we expect to see that sign? I'm just kidding.
I wish.
If you're cutting a number change, you would have to come back here to get a change in the face of the sign.
Yeah, to change the price.
Great.
Any other question? Thank you. If there's anyone else from the public who's here to speak on this, please sign in, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Garrett Scott. I live at 1421 Iroquois Place. I'm one of the residences that's directly adjacent behind the Circle K, and for here, for once, I'm up here speaking in support of the petitioner, because I'd like to support what the staff reported in sort of three broad points. The sign as currently located on that corner, without the setbacks, puts it at the furthest point possible from the adjacent residential properties, and given the changes coming to our backyard, we'd like to keep that sign as far away as we could. Second, given the neighborhood concerns for pedestrian bike safety that came up again and again in this three-year process, getting that up on the pylons instead of a monument sign would be very much welcome. We've got a lot of elementary school kids walking up to Burns Park and over to Tappan. They're the ones who tend to dart out from behind things, and if anyone's made that right turn from Stadium to Packard, you know that people get a little impatient there, so I'd like to encourage having them up, having the sign up like that. And finally, this strikes me as another instance where the setback and the sign requirements for the city, while well-intentioned, don't necessarily map well onto a gas station. It's not a trivial concern that, given all the changes coming to this gas station, that we keep some of the signifiers of a gas station, that we keep that sign out there, away from residential properties, on the corner, where it's going to affect the people who need it, the people driving by. So, okay, well, that's all that I scrolled down from my notes, those three points in support. Apologize for not being so prepared, but if you have any questions, I don't speak for all of the neighbors, but can answer any of the concerns that we've had come up over the years. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this petition? Seeing no one, we're in discussion. Todd?
This is a really easy one for me. I will vote yes. It's easy because I think it is only a refacing, and all the structural elements, the poles, are staying the same. I mean, I think it's almost a technical, I'm not criticizing staff, John, but this has only changed because it's being re-faced, but in other sense, it's really not a change at all, it's just continuing the same sign, and we're all familiar with this intersection, and I think a monumental sign would be a disaster because you can't see through it. And that would be a change, but looking at this picture here of existing and proposed, personally, I don't think this is the change of a sign, any more than going from 198 to 226 is a change. Maybe that's a little more of a change. So I'm definitely voting yes on this. This is an easy one for me.
Kirk?
Another question for staff. So it seems like, I would imagine the site plan was being prepared, was there a monument sign proposed, and you visited the site, and then it was decided to go back to this, or how did that play out, or was it always proposed just to renovate the existing sign?
Well, during the site plan process, signage is not considered, first off, and then when I met with the applicant from Quattro Construction, we did look at other alternatives, and it was just general discussion. And then once we made our site visit, and I made my site visit with the traffic engineer, informed her that it was probably in the best interest to continue along the path which was originally proposed as a reface of the sign and not a monument sign. We were just looking at different alternatives for the site. You know, I will say, I thought you were going to ask about the history, since I've been here on the board with sign variances, and I know we've had a couple before us, and those are ones that are brand-new signage. They want to install today and wanting variances. And this is a little bit different and unique in the fact that it's existing. The, in the staff report, I did mention that there are some restrictions on the site due to the fact that there's, one half of the site cannot be developed. There's a deed restriction on the other side of that site, on the western side of the site, and then once you put the building and the canopy onto this side, it really limits the availability for a detached sign. This might just be the only option, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's probably the easiest option, but the motivation behind sign ordinance changes that we've had is to change the environment gradually as things redevelop into something that isn't highway or suburban oriented. So while I agree that a monument sign is not appropriate right smack on the corner in case there's a cyclist going out quick, or, you know, you don't want to endanger pedestrians at all, there are monument signs all through the city on very busy corridors. They just stay away from the corner, and there's a lot of frontage along these two, you know, the two side streets here, and it sounds as though, just given, you know, the requirements or the preferences of gas stations to have a lot of information on their signs, I understand it could be a different variance request coming in, but I'm not in favor of perpetuating the exact reason we've changed our sign ordinances to get rid of this kind of aesthetic, so this one's also an easy one for me, but in the opposite, for the opposite reason.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm with Todd. It's, to me, just changing the face of the sign, the dimensions aren't changing, you can see through it for pedestrian safety. I appreciate Kirk's broader macro point, but I'm going to be voting for this one.
Dave?
I also agree with Todd. In fact, I'm wondering why they even need a variance, because as Todd said, it's essentially the same sign. This corner I drive by more than any other corner in the city. I live right in the neighborhood. In fact, I fill up at this gas station frequently. There are many pedestrians and bicyclists on this corner, not just because of Burns Park, but Tappan down the street, funnels people all the way down past here, and even Pioneer High School, although it's further away, I think there are pedestrian traffic driven by that, and a lot of pedestrian traffic driven by the Dairy Queen, which is across the street from you. So I think it's vital to have sightlines preserved, and I have to agree with the traffic engineers in that. I'll be voting yes for this, even, I mean, to me, it's the same sign, and I'll vote yes for it.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made. The key thing for me is the neighborhood impacts. You've got residential on all sides, on Stadium, further down Packard, behind the new Circle K, and given that this is a pretty heavily traversed corridor for pedestrians and bicyclists, I mean, I'm looking at these pictures, and I will, I'm having memories when I lived just down the street at Woodbury Gardens of not seeing people even behind the donation bin that's right there. I'd love to see that moved if you guys wanted to do that. It just feels to me like monument signs or putting a sign on top of the building will impact the neighbors in a way that's detrimental, and the current situation is working from a sightline perspective. That said, I also see Kirk's point about transitioning things, and I think that that's why the sign ordinance was put in place. I understand the reasons why it was, but I do feel like this intersection is going to be far away from really making it feel like that, I guess, urban environment that we're looking for with the ordinance. So I feel okay supporting this variance.
Kirk?
Mr. Barrett, would they be permitted to have the price information? I mean, it's not as though, you know, this would be mistaken for some other use, like a grocery store or something, so I think the fact that it's a gas station's pretty clear. If the prices were on the edge of the canopy, is that an allowed placement? So it could be facing both streets instead of just a flat sign?
That is an option to put the sign on, the sign can't be faced. I'm not sure from a structural engineer point if it would work. That might be a better question for the applicant, but I know sometimes they do put signage on canopy faces. But I don't know if it's exactly gas pricing and things like that. It might be just a logo on the canopy.
And was there any discussion with engineer about monument signs that are located substantially off the corner so as not to block people, you know, coming in, entering the intersection?
We just discussed the corner location.
Just discussed the corner?
Because I don't think they could move it in the interior with the canopy's going to be right there and the circulation path.
Like in the, in the green space between the circulation and the sidewalk, is there? There's not opportunity for? Circulation goes right up to the sidewalk on the other side?
Yep. You've got the extension between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay. Yeah, I just, my feeling is they haven't explored what would be a really big help to this area is just to have it on the side of the canopy or some other, some other alternative. Thanks.
Any further discussion or motion? Any further discussion or motion?
Make a motion. Petition ZBA 17-027, 1420 East Stadium Boulevard. Chapter 61 variance. Based on the following findings of fact and in accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants two variances from Chapter 61, Section 5, colon, 502, 2B, ground signs to allow a 19-foot detached identification sign to remain in its present location. A variance of 35.21 feet along East Stadium Boulevard and a 31.75 foot variance along Packard Street is approved, and the sign will be altered per the submitted plans. A, that the alleged hardships or practical difficulties or both are peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance and result from conditions which do not exist generally throughout the city. B, that allowing the variance will result in substantial justice being done considering the public benefits intended to be secured by this chapter, the individual hardships that will be suffered by a failure of the board to grant a variance, and the rights of others whose property would be affected by the allowance of the variance.
Do you have support? Support from Mike? Todd?
Yes.
Kirk?
No.
I vote yes. Mike Daniel?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Dovmire?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Variances are granted. Moving on to unfinished business, we have non-reports in communications. We have addressed. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, do I have a motion to adjourn? Kirk, support? From Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.